Welcome to the board meeting. Gary, would you lead us in my pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you for coming again. Glad everyone's here. And start right out with the.
Will the agenda be? I'd like to enter paying a motion. To approve the January third, twenty twenty three, regular board meeting.
All in favor? Okay. All four.
Paying a motion for the. To approve the December fifth, twenty twenty two.
Any question on the minutes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Be unanimous. Thank you. We'll go right to the student body report and. Check in with the elementary school first.
Hello, I'm Cooper.
I'm Finley.
And we're in fifth grade.
We wanted to share a few fun things that have been happening at Geneseo Elementary this past month.
December has been an extremely busy month for students in the elementary building. Our Go Blue trade we focused on was understanding and students brought in over a hundred and fifty Go Blue cards and got to sign the wall of fame. We had a Go Blue assembly in the auditorium and a bunch of teachers got silly strained by students because they were having a difficult time showcasing understanding. It was great and very messy.
This past month, we had our band concert, key two chorus concert. Our three, five chorus concert was postponed due to weather, but. But we did have it and there was also an orchestra concert. Ms. Downs, Ms. Calder and Ms. Stilti did a great job getting students ready.
Our second graders had visitors from the SUNY Geneseo Lives program come in and spend time in their classrooms. Several of the participants are former Geneseo students and this is a partnership that will continue monthly for the remainder of the school year.
The fifth graders host hosted a fundraiser event at the lighter side eatery as we continue to fundraise for our whale watch trip. Over the next few months, we will be ramping up our fundraising efforts.
As a school, we all went on a field trip to the movie theater. Each grade had a theater reserved for them and they were able to watch a movie together. Movies included Puss in Boots Two, The Grinch and Home Alone. Students were very respectful and we are grateful for this opportunity.
On the last day of school before break, the whole school came together to participate in our sing along. Each class learned a holiday tune and led the entire school in singing the song. This is a great tradition that we were happy to have take place once again this year.
This month, we will be focusing on the Go Blue trade to grit and will be participating in the principal's grit challenge each day. We will be participating in physical, academic and SEL challenges each day as a class and we'll see how much we can accomplish. We are excited for this to play out. We also have many after school activities currently taking place, including art club, book clubs, tennis club, chess club and ski club. Quest will also take place on January twenty first. We are so grateful for all of these experiences and the staff that give up their time to support our students. Thank you for listening and have a great day the Go Blue way.
They're so good. Awesome, thank you. Okay, all right. Thanks for your job.
Sounds like fun. I know, I mean, we are a little. Well, this one's going to be a little shorter since it does kick back from break, but our seniors are starting to pan prom, which is really exciting. For sports, there's a lot going on tonight, as most of you may know and have seen from our parking lot. There's a wrestling match in Avon against Leroy. There's a girls' basketball JV varsity game in Warsaw. Here tonight is a boys' basketball JV varsity game also against Warsaw. Varsity boys should be just starting to warm up now. There's a home hockey game tomorrow versus Aquinas. There's a jazz, acapella and shrug choir concert Thursday, January twelfth, which I'm really excited for. And midterms are at the end of this month. Any questions?
Excellent. Well done, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll go right to administrative updates. Mr. Beal.
Yeah, well, welcome back.
Thank you.
Like she said, we're ready to move things halfway through our winter season. Pretty much right now, it's, I see winter is a pretty long season. Athletics about four months, so a couple of months in. But you know, our student athletes are working hard. Both of our girls and boys basketball teams are in the process of determining over the break. Wrestling team is ready to wait until the turn of the break. And our hockey team was able to go do the overnight trip out to Albany and had a good experience out there. A trip. Obviously, I want to, I want to thank the Laker backer Booster Club and stuff, especially Shannon, she did a lot of work helping to get that off. That was the square away. Finalizing the hotel rooms and clearing that out and families and things like that. So obviously, thanks a lot for playing and providing, and I take care of the kids and put their ass up there. It was a good experience. School. So, I know. So that's really that where we're at there. You know, wrestling, it obviously emerged with Avon wrestling and you know, this is actually, we have nine kids participating. Just from Gonna See on the wrestling thing, which is a good amount of practice that we've had so far. So it's a good experience for them, a good opportunity for the nine wrestlers to compete in wrestling. And that's going really well. Spring sports will be here before you know it, so we're finalizing our spring sports schedules. A lot of them are up online already, just kind of looking some games and moving some games around and need to. Make room for some other things and then. But first meeting February, I should have either coaching a pit or spring sports. I arrived and had that to me. First coaching. And we're wrapped. Any questions?
Thank you. One more. Thank you. Questions for the A D from the board?
Will the K G back up in the mezzanine for baseball and softball? The plans are planned, it will be.
Yep.
When do you anticipate that back up the running?
Uh, well, it'll probably be closer to March, just because that's our P E gym as well for elementary. And so we want to try to. Allow them to have that space as long as possible before that. But should be right on March.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Gary.
Thanks, Greg. I'm going to. Switch to the official board.
Mr. Holt, is that potential?
Oh.
Got it. All right. As everyone says, Happy New Year, it's good to be here. Just wanted to provide more pictures. As I said, one of the exciting parts of the capital improvement project would be when the steel structure starts to be put in place and you can see. It has started and here I've got a little brief description that you can clarify perhaps. I believe the. Lower level steel is the floor of the gym.
Yes.
There's the roof. The. Window like looking areas, those will be HVAC. Areas, so take it away.
Okay, sure. So the steel joists are going up and the structural steel, red iron, it's going to take a while. This is four to six weeks of work to do. So. I don't, I can see a lot going on other than what you see going on, so. That makes sense. So good progress around schedule. It's all good too. One other thing we did do over break was there was no isolation valve. In the sprinkler system for this lower level, the original structure of the building, the water was shut off the Friday, two weeks ago. And then was brought back online, but the valve was cut in, so that was brought online Tuesday after Christmas. So that, so it was, there were no hiccups and staff didn't know they were back Wednesday. What I was, this if it never happened, other than we do that, all the water from the street, it'd be drained all the way down. So then that introduces air, so you get some air, just like you could water in your brakes at home and turn the fire on and get that. So we had a little bit of that, but it's all about now, so that was accomplished. The only thing I have for you is, I think some kind of a reach out. Is my project manager, Charlie Connor, left us and went on to. Build solar fields, so came from the G C world, wanted to go back to the G C world. So he is going to be traveling doing solar installations across the state, so unfortunately we lost. And so I had new gentleman on board, Brock Cutter Beck, started two weeks ago and is getting up to speed and just wanted to. That's it, there wasn't that much.
So the valve that we had installed is the shut off for the sprinklers going.
Correct. For this, yes.
Okay, good idea.
Yeah. But. Otherwise, there's no way to isolate this. That is now.
Good.
Nothing more to say than that. Pretty much, we're getting.
When do you anticipate the structural completion?
Oh, probably later part of next month. That all the steel's here, it's pretty tight. I think Charlie made believe that the sending can, it's going to let things slow down. And that it haven't, but it's just, it's the point in. Time in construction where we are is first in steel, but nobody else can be in there when they're sitting in steel, only the steelworkers. It's a safe. Matter, so. Kick everybody out. The steelworkers.
Great, thank you.
Questions?
Sure, any other questions?
Gary, I just, just a. Full stop, there's, you know, people will say it's. On a pandemic, if you were down on the building. Patient got interactive, there was a question in regards at that point, you'd be pleased with. Cycle bench and use and shoot it solid. Backward six weeks. And the building was up six weeks. Where, I haven't seen you in a while, so where's, where did all that suck? We had a story, did we have a, we had a, on site. Was this status the, yeah, you know, the thing shows.
So we have the bleachers, there's bleachers up.
I don't know, I don't know where the team sits.
Okay, got you. Okay, I don't have an answer for that. I will get you an answer, but. But you?
They have, they're, they have like a seven, eight months to eat time.
Was it, was it a district purchase, was it?
Yeah, okay. So, so they have like a seven, eight month period. So they're, they're ordered, first order, they're. That's been. You know, we're in August, so they, we're hoping they're here by February, so they're here by August. So we have a five month, race period. Hopefully that will happen. So. So we'll just keep hoping.
How's that, that works?
They were seven months out, which means they should be around February, so they have to bring March an extra five months.
Or are they?
Okay. Just conversation on the, you know, and I hadn't seen you in a while.
The problem.
So that wasn't part of the building, it wasn't part of the B Juck down there, the building package?
Right, it wasn't in the contract to buy.
It was, it's part of the project, not part of a contract with G C or with the site contract.
That was a direct purchase from the district.
Okay. No questions, good questions.
Thanks, appreciate it.
And as Gary mentioned.
He's here.
You know. Charlie Connor had, has left and you know, we, we are certainly going to miss him because he did great work while he was here. And his, his last day, last Tuesday, when the valve was being replaced, that was also Brock's first day. And leading to our large gym clothes as they continue. Brock walked into the lower part of the school and saw the entire arrangement flooding. Now, you'll remember, that's the day that Gary talked about all the water being drained out of our school. And when they were going to replace the valve, so I walk in and Brock was a little alarmed by the amount of water in our hallway. And the plumber was really nervous. However, Jake the plumber had nothing to do with this, it was our pool, the chlorinator had overflowed, but he was very concerned that the work he was doing to replace that valve had gone seriously wrong. It had. And what I tried to do was really capture the water as it got to the gym floors, because really that's, that was the most area that we were concerned about. The water did not get above the gym floors and I don't know, John, the middle one is a video, but that's something you can see too. On it, because you can see. The water. Half an inch outside that door. And underneath that wood floor are called sleepers. And those are wooden supports that actually run parallel underneath that floor. So they're really hoping those sleepers have stopped a lot of the water from going underneath. And so what we did is immediately when we were notified, we saw the large vacuums in there, we were cleaning up the water. Instantly turned on the heat to add a lot of airflow and put fans on there. So hoping to not see significant damage, cupping or buckling of the gym floor, but we will continue to keep you updated. When, when I met Brock, I, I asked Charlie, I said, did you, do you kind of breathe Brock on, on the Geneseo building? And he said, what do you mean? And I said, well, you know, all the things that never would go wrong that go wrong here. And he said, oh, yeah, he, yo, yo, jump right in. Well, I think that was Brock's first day and it was fitting, you know, what can go wrong will.
And he did, jumped on a floor machine.
He did jump on a floor machine, yes.
Seventeen loads of water out.
He did have a lot of water.
Yeah.
Cleaned up by the.
They'd been here all the time, so he grabbed the floor machine and started sucking water up our floor.
Yeah, absolutely, you know, that, that's not his role, that had nothing to do with, with the capital project, but just so.
Can do attitude.
Absolutely, you wanted to jump in and then. Thank Mr. Clark and his son Ethan for coming in, because they didn't come in and spent probably a good part of the day finishing that. So that was. We'll continue to keep up with that.
It's all fun, isn't it?
Yeah.
Any, any other damage, the outside floors or anything?
So, yep, so the water, because it did sit on those B C T, those laminate tiles, they are starting to pop. Because what happens is when the water sits on top of that tile, it loosens the coacy and the glue. So you know, looking to plan to replace that tile as well. That's mainly the, the damage at this point.
What, we don't have pictures of that? What's that?
I didn't, I mean, it's just basically loose tile, so if you look at the floor, you would basically see that at the square tile, that the corners are starting to peel up. And some of them you can literally just walk down it and.
It's, it's, it's sensible.
Sensible, okay.
It's sensible already. One thing we did look out though, E P C. The performance contract is still ongoing. I don't think you've noticed the difference in the corridors, they've gone from yellow to white. Wow. Wow, what a difference.
When I walked in the Dick Ellis wing tonight, I was amazed.
It is amazing.
I'm amazed.
The new LED lighting, it's remarkable. It takes that yellow dingy work away and it's bright and white and it's amazing. Yeah.
At the last board meeting, I had a before and after of one hallway.
Oh, yeah.
And it is, it's significant.
It really is.
You think the walls are yellow and they're, they're actually white. It was just.
It's pretty cool.
One more question, was the chlorinator fixed and did it impact poor usage at all or is it showing?
It, Aaron has fixed it, so it's working. The pool company is coming throughout Wednesday to make sure that it is in working order. It did impact practices one day, correct?
Power was willing to open up in between the practice sessions, so we were able to power the two hour presses. Tuesday.
So I wanted to provide a little bit more clarification on, thanks Gary, you're all well, so yeah. On the request for the modified lacrosse merger. And at the last meeting, I had reported that we have had, you know, the request to add lacrosse with a merger between Avon and Livonia. That the costs are approximately thirty five hundred to forty five hundred for boys, three thousand to four thousand for girls. The transportation cost, obviously, we would be practicing at either Avon or Livonia. The away contests are just what they are, they're the away games. The total cost of seventeen thousand and nineteen thousand, that's the total cost of having three levels, so modified JV and varsity. For three schools, so those numbers need to be divided by three schools. And at this point, what we'd be making the recommendation for is only offering. Modified lacrosse for this spring. So when you look at that aspect, what you're really looking at is a ten thousand dollar total cost for G C S. Approximately four thousand dollars for coaching and six thousand dollars for transportation. And really, when you look at those numbers, you know, we, we really did try and take the higher of those numbers, hoping that, that we, the actual cost will come in less. You know, is there potential for sharing some of the transportation with Avon, going to Livonia? And sharing some of those transportation costs to away games. So it would be ten thousand dollars, not the seventeen to nineteen thousand dollars. So why would we make this recommendation? You know, we went through a process, we did survey our element or was it fourth grade through twelfth grade, Craig? And really we found that there was a high interest to add lacrosse. It is an opportunity for students, we would never be able to add a lacrosse program here, we would never be able to fully. Have enough students to participate in a lacrosse sport. So really, the only way for us to be able to offer this opportunity for our students would be to do a merger, much like we've done for, as Craig has mentioned. For wrestling or hockey. You know, when we look at adding these team sports, we just don't have the numbers to add a full team sport here. And, and merging is really, is the way of the future. You know, one of the questions is the participation issues of, of prior sports. So we have had situations where we've been unable to fully field baseball teams, softball teams. Those issues existed prior to adding lacrosse. And really what, what Craig and I have talked about needing to do for our students in our school is find more consistent mergers for those, for those sports. That had been unable to consistently have enough students to fully field a team. I really think that it is the way to go for our district, it's becoming a very popular sport. And it, it helps the neighboring districts as well, because they, they really need our students to make sure they have enough to field their teams as well. So it is on the agenda tonight, it's item eight point oh seven. And what you would be doing is you would be approving that we're adding this merged sport. At the next board meeting, we would then approve the intermunicipal agreement with us and, and that contract between Avon and Livonia. But I just wanted to pause and answer any questions.
This is how many?
I just talked to Craig and it was six to eight boys are interested and then three to four girls.
Was, can you get that number again?
There's six to eight boys and three to four girls.
And that's from a survey?
That is, so we had the parent meeting and so since then, the, the students have said that they have shown interest in this. And so it's the modified A, it would be grade seven to nine.
So concerned with, we move forward with this recommendation this year. What if we have trouble finding those merging districts for the other sport in the future? And like, is there, was there discussion on if this grows and then it pulls some loads more? Like how we deal with that if we can't find it?
Yeah, I mean, really, it, it is about trying to find a consistent partner. I mean, it was both Livonia and Geneseo last year could not, was it JV softball that we couldn't offer last year or modified? Because of the numbers and we, we did try to merge and it just, it didn't work out last year. So there's, there's not a perfect answer to that. If we have students that. You know, migrate from softball and baseball to lacrosse. I think that then asks the question, i- is that, do we continue to offer those or do we look to have someone consistently merge with us? We can continue to offer a lacrosse, a softball, a baseball track. I know one of the things for this upcoming year, Craig did talk to all the spring coaches and they did not anticipate an issue this year with numbers.
Did you get your question? Meeting? Then wasn't the meeting that you, that they had, you're right, some questions on?
The parent meeting was about logistics, where practice would be, meeting the coaches. Did everything with that?
Program history. This is class. Well, with the merger, class C, but that would be at the varsity level, so obviously you're looking at modified. Most of the schools that we play will be on the rural county base, they relate to rural county. But mostly the lacrosse.
Is there like a. A minimum of kids that. If they don't sign up, can wait back out? You know what I mean? Like, you know, you got six to eight boys, three to four girls, if they change their mind and it's not, you know, worth it?
So what I would say at this point, Kathy, is that we would, you know, my recommendation is to approve it for this year. And evaluate after this year, these would be annual decisions. We have to have the intermunicipal agreements approved annually every year. So it really be, would be looking at, you know, how many students actually did go out, yeah, they said six to eight, so there was interest, three went out. Evaluating, you know, is, is it something that we could maintain? Is it something that we could afford to, to continue to offer for our students? Absolutely, it would be offer it this spring and then evaluate, was it successful? How did it impact the other sports?
I mean, I, I, Frank said we have nine kids for wrestling. How many? Geneseo kids are on the hockey?
Yes, true.
Seven or eight. Roughly even, each of the three pounds.
And what's that, we know what, what's that cost us? The hockey?
What is the score, there's a question?
Mm-hmm. We're about wrestling, but we paint the wrestling.
Barry is on the season, I think, I have six thousand.
No, I don't think of six, I don't think of six.
Would you usually add sort of a, the rest? The rest. Would you use the hockey agreement as a, as a model or a template? Yeah, we will basically use the same template for most of the.
Right, we have other, I mean, we, we merged for football, we've merged for. Wrestling.
Or that, do you think it'll be equal among the three districts? Because hockey wasn't always, it, it varied. And it's, it's become, I know it's even now, but it, that like started last year. Do you envision this being equal?
So yes, the coaching costs will be split three ways. Obviously, the transportation costs are going to be power quality, unless we can. Look out. Have opportunities for them. But yes, the coaching costs are split three ways. It's, it's coaching costs, yeah, officiating.
Just going to say those have actually.
So you've got on the record saying that, you know, the opportunity to give all kids opportunities of state will be looked at. I think it's, the more, because we've brought kids, awesome. You're right, your basis, your plan, but you're, you reach out to other schools that, hey, kid numbers are short in this sport, this sport. Would you be willing to discuss mergers in those sports too? Are we with that?
Have I reached out to other E Ds?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. There is merger opportunities out there. Livonia for sure. Is one of the largest sports. There is one. Trying to say yes without knowing, no, no, sorry.
Hard to say yes without knowing, no, no, sorry.
All right, and then just upcoming events, there is a junior parent meeting on January ninth and then as Gianna said, we do have the middle school, high school, G N, jazz band, bill choir on January eleventh. I mean, the holiday coming up, sounds weird, we're just coming up for the holiday, but Martin, we think, um observance day is January sixth. Good questions?
Thank you. Five point oh one, unit relations, anybody's, I have this pretty much not, oh there. Well, then all right, the committee reports, Mike, Todd, and Frank, we're about to make.
We're about to make, uh the only thing to report now is we're just now starting the new the twenty twenties, three to twenty-four budget and uh this is the first pass, let us open items at this stage, this stage, I don't know, we know what the state budget will be and the revenue picture, third, but right now, just the, the first pass.
Can I just, what are any more updates on foundation, please change?
I would wait.
We'll wait, we'll see what comes out in numbers before something here a week from today.
Very much important, it's how they look at that, we're gonna base them on our district.
We'll, we'll see what happens, if there's, the formula is not set to change, we'll see if they like the formula or not, in the face. It's like, they, they sometimes have them, sometimes.
Thank you. Um, policy committee, we did not meet this time, um but uh we'll be asking you to approve uh second read on several policies that we talked about last time under eight oh three, um boilerplate stuff that we're already doing with duties of the treasurer, tax collector, uh auditor, claims auditor, act of record, uh school attorney, advertising, emergency closing, starters, circumstantial pretty recent stuff. That's it, uh, E C E F, um you may have gotten, uh, here on the mailing list, you may have gotten a request for uh donations or we'll send out about this time of year, um if you didn't and you're so inclined, um G C E F, P O backs eleven in Geneseo, I'm sure they'd be delighted to take your contribution. Uh, they do a lot of good work, um the hardwood classic is back on and and uh they're doing a lot of good things for kids. So with that, that's what a personnel.
Under personnel, like you're kind of getting consent motion for item a lot of seven point zero two through seventy point two one.
Any uh questions on any of those folks?
No. We have enough minutes, if there's another reservation, seven point oh nine. So we
We're adding two more and I think I think we're at, so what we're, yes, we are adding subs um to really help with the training purposes of the process of hiring. We can certainly discuss that more in um executive session if you'd like.
Everybody good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? unanimous, thank you.
Under the business, I can add consent motion for item three point three oh two from eight point zero eight.
Okay. Questions on any of those? Ready, okay? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Anyone opposed? Here, unanimous, thank you.
Under business office, consent change motion, consent motion for item nine point zero two to nine point zero eight. The details of the plan, you want?
Questions on those? Pretty good, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Yes, unanimous, thank you. Uh, before I ask Mike to entertain a motion for executive session under, quick item under all businesses, the board picture. What, um, what do we want to do about that? Do we want to uh try again for a, a group picture or do we want to just do individual pictures? You guys call.
We gotta put a tie on again?
Yeah. Oh, the G C S tie.
Oh, yeah. I thought you were quoting um individuals, but I don't think so. I like to, yeah.
Okay, so we'll go with individual. Sure, Mr. Holt.
That makes it easy.
Thank you, everyone. So I attend the executive.
The executive, the most important executive. For personnel and events. Litigation, enterprise, collective association.
Second, all in favor, all right, aye. Thank you, everyone. Oh, Mr. Holt. For once, I would want to, yeah, thank you. Great.
Thank you very much.